Hello, my name is Robert Kelly. Phone number 720-771-1389. Email address, N as in Nancy Miranda, M I R A N D A, the number three at Yahoo dot com. Again, that's N M I R A N D A, the number three at Yahoo dot com. I just wanted to leave a message and voice my opinion on how I disagree with developing the farmland near the Westminster Castle. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out. Again, my name is Robert Kelly. Thank you so much, and I hope you have a wonderful day.
Hello, my name is Holly Walter. I've been a resident of Westminster for forty-one years. I've watched eighty-eight go from a small little street to a bustling thoroughway between Sheridan and Federal. I have walked past that farm very many times throughout my life, and I just want to say you guys are crazy for wanting to build on it. I know just because there's space available means you can, it doesn't mean that you should. Right now, we have no snow. There's a water drought throughout the state of Colorado, as well as you guys have put in high-density housing behind Davy's Locker. There's high-density housing by the property of By Wishbone, as well as across the street from the Park and Ride. I don't know why you guys decide you want to put so many people in Westminster, but the reality is, we don't have the space, we don't have the resources, and no matter what you say or how you try to spin it, there won't be resources for many more people coming to the neighborhood. That space provides land, and it keeps the area from getting hot because of the vegetation. And the reality is, is that the uplands just isn't a viable option for Westminster, no matter how much you guys want to continue to talk about it. It's disgusting. The fact that you guys don't want any open space is disgusting. The fact that you guys are trying to sell off any little piece of property that's out there so you can build on it is disgusting. And the fact that you guys are probably not residents of Westminster, and you decide that you want to continue to build is disgusting. I've been here for forty-one years. I love the farm. I love the open space. I love the neighborhood, and I love the people here. I don't want to see the gentrification happen that could happen with people moving there, and I also don't want to see crime rates go up in Westminster, adding additional people. Please, please, please say no to building on that farm. It is just not a good idea for anybody here in the city. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alexis Hill. I am calling. I would like to state my opinion. I think that the Westminster farm should be saved. I don't feel like we need any more building structures, anything in the way. That is a beautiful view. It's a beautiful place. It doesn't need to be destroyed. There's too many people in Colorado as it is. It is overpopulated. There is no need to make this beautiful place a site for sore eyes with construction, with all of the things that would make it lose its beautifulness. Please, please do not build there. Save the farm.
Hello, this is Gary Christensen. I live just a block from the Westminster farm, which is going to have this upland development. I'd just like to say that I support the development, and I'm very happy to hopefully have a park and some bike paths near me soon, because there aren't a lot of great options where I am. So hopefully, this goes through, and before long, there'll be a nice little park on the corner. Thanks. Bye-bye.
My name is John T. Bramer. I live at seventy-five, seventy-one Elliott Street, Westminster. I am against this development. We need to have green belts. We need to have the agriculture. Things are getting worse in this country. You're going to find it harder and harder to find food. So if you want to play ignorant, just ignore what me and a lot of other people are saying, and go ahead, and just look at the dollar bill, and then when you choke or you starve to death later, you can remember how wise you were. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Ellen Berg, and I would like to urge City Council to vote no to uplands development. The traffic problems we have on Federal Boulevard are horrendous. Adding more people, high rises is just going to make it worse. I really would like City Council to vote no on this development. Thank you.
This is Susan Jean Froenfeld. I live outside Westminster boundaries, but very close to the property being considered for development by uplands. We have owned our house here for over forty years. I've long expected the farm to be developed someday, as we've watched the surrounding areas grow. I imagine some of this will be developed and built upon. However, the present plan is the wrong one. If you have spent some time around this gem in the city, you will understand that it is an oasis for wildlife that is unsurpassed in the area. There is literally nothing like it within a half hour's drive or more. The view west alone is priceless any time of year. This is why people move to Colorado and why they choose to live here. The plan as currently presented by the developer is the wrong one for Westminster. Considering that this is the biggest project of any Westminster City Council to consider or approve, and it will change the face of the city forever, isn't it worth taking the time to get it right? I know the developer is pressing the council to approve. The developer doesn't vote in Westminster and doesn't live here. If the choice is between now and never for the developer, never is the right choice. Too many apartments and closed living, tall buildings blocking out not just the view, but the sun itself, more congested streets. The surrounding area retail has been in decline for years, and the buildings are in decay, and thousands of more people living here will not improve anyone's life. My own life will be impoverished by this development. I urge this City Council to vote a resounding no on approval. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Keith Kingswater. I'm a resident of Westminster, and I'm opposing this development of the farm. And I think we've got enough construction and housing and residential building going on, plus commercial, right over here in the downtown Westminster, down to new Westminster Downtown area. And I just don't think that we need to build more buildings and all that. My father used to live down on Seventy-four, Forty-one Bradburg, and that was the original mayor of Westminster when it first became a city. And there was a little building that sat on the side of the yard there. It was probably twelve by fifteen, little building. That was the original City Hall. And now it sits over in a parking lot over on Newton Street, and nobody knows even what it is unless they stop by, but it just looks, you know, I just think there needs to be more preserve, preserve of the history of the city of Westminster than just keep building and building and building, raising everybody's water rates. And that's my opinion, so thank you very much.
Hello, this is Sandra Steiner, Director of Post-Secondary and Workforce Readiness for Westminster Public Schools, calling in support of the Uplands Community Collective and the participation opportunities this development offers our career and technical education program. Westminster Public Schools is committed to student readiness for the day after graduation, and to ensure our students have the demonstrated skills needed to be successful, we integrate opportunities for them to earn college credit and industry credentials in thirteen different career pathways. An additional key area of growth for our students comes when they are given the opportunity to do work-based learning. The Uplands Community Collective and its partnership with Westminster Public Schools, CTE, provides our students work-based learning opportunities in the construction, agriculture, business, and culinary arts pathways. This single development can support our students and teachers through classroom demonstrations, project-based learning ideas, mentoring, and access to internships and apprenticeships for our students. In addition to support for our students in class, we also look forward to the potential employment opportunities offered by the construction companies and others who are part of the uplands development. Westminster Public School students look for ways to contribute to their Westminster community and give back to the area they call home. Through our partnership with the uplands development, our students will have an active role in the development of their city, and maybe students in other pathways will one day live in one of the homes their peers helped construct. This full-circle working relationship supports the Westminster community and our career and technical education programs for years to come. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ezekiel Williams. I live at eighteen ninety West One Thirty-Fourth Avenue in Westminster, Colorado, eight zero two three four. I'm calling tonight to express my support for the uplands project. I'm a young professional in the city here of Westminster, and I currently work with Spanish and Japanese-speaking members all around the world. And I was recently approached by the uplands community team, and they really told me a lot about this project. And I'm happy to see such an inclusive process, as well as good principles for the development of the local neighborhoods. I, too, would want to start, you know, a family here in Westminster, perhaps continue to live here as well. But currently, there's not really all that many housing options for younger folks like myself. And I think that this development would be able to provide such an opportunity to have a higher quality of life, as well as, you know, parks, trails, open spaces that are incorporated into a plan. I think those are amazing. An interesting feature is that when you compare them with, you know, the existing neighborhoods, there's not all that many park or green spaces lined out in their infrastructure, but this one does, and I think that's really amazing. With that, I guess, please support this application tonight. Thank you. Gracias, and arigato.
Hello, my name is Donna Glasgow, and I'm calling about the Save the Farm in Westminster there. I drive by there frequently. I enjoy the view, and I will be very disappointed if you just let that go into a housing development. We need open space, fresh air, and we need to be in touch with nature. Thank you for considering my opinion. Goodbye.
Um, hi, this is Mary Spior, and I am calling to basically support the new community that is supposed to be going in, in Westminster, in the uplands. I know you guys have votes coming up, so I did want to leave a message to convey my support for that particular project. I think it'll be a great addition to Westminster to have this developed and the parkland that they are proposing. And I believe it's forty-seven acres that this particular community is building, and over two thousand new housing units. That is it. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Suzanne Lamb. No uplands. No uplands.
Yes, my name is Dawn Davis, and I am the President of the North Metro Region for First Bank. I have two locations in, well, actually, three locations in Westminster. And I just wanted to call and provide my support for the uplands neighborhood. And mostly, I am concerned with the affordable housing in our area, and uplands will provide up to three hundred units of affordable housing, and I think that is incredibly important. I do like that they've been able to look at their sustainability and their impact on water and other things like that. I think it's a very thoughtful and well-processed location, and the developers have done a good job trying to look at as many concerns as they possibly can. But for affordable housing reasons and blight in our area and economic development, I would just really encourage council to consider approval for the uplands neighborhood. If you have any questions, you're more than welcome to call me, and I look forward to seeing full approval next week. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bhuvan Talise. I live in Westminster with my son, and I'm from Nepali community. I'm actually growing older. I work in the health center, but it's good for you guys what you're doing for the community in the future. Jasper is not reforming to be, I call for Jasper. It's the community. I live in Westminster, like thirteen years. This is the development community. It's good for people. Later, if I need some help for the community, I'm looking for an older senior home, too. I am fifty years old. This is all the, all the developer is Westminster area. I live with my son, and then will work in the Westminster side, too. Bhuvan Talise. Yeah, the, I'm calling for development area. This is the thing. Anyway, it's the, I'm glad to you guys make the, build the new area community, everything for the future plan. That would be great. And then calling on behalf of me, Bhuvan Talise, live with my son, because Westminster, eight zero zero three one. I'm glad to hear everyone's community, like the grocery center, medicine center, medical center, shopping center, mall, and it's good for the future.
Hello, yes, this is Charles Rick Andrews, and I'm calling to comment on the uplands development. And I'm just going to read you a printed message that I've sent to the council. "I've lived in Westminster for over thirty years. I came here to live in a community with open space, greenways, and parks, not sprawling high-rise apartments and townhomes. I'm opposed to the proposed high-density development on the property known as the uplands." Actually, I'm opposed to all high-density housing developments in the cities, in the city. "And why would the city approve another development that would directly compete with the city's new downtown? If I wanted to live in a community with high-density developments, I'd move to Cap Hill, Glendale, or downtown Denver. I live in the Sunset Ridge Division in Westminster, and I haven't met a single person in my neighborhood that approves of high-density developments there. Neither Federal nor Lowell has the capacity to handle all the traffic. Federal is already a problem, and the developers don't have any kind of C.D.O. approval for any sort of expansion. Where is the additional water coming from? Does the city acquire additional water rights that I'm unaware of? And what does this do to the city's twenty-year growth plan? This has got to put it right at its cap, if not above. Additionally, the developer Chad Ellington and O'Reed Capital have a history of not honoring promises made to secure developments in the past. Why would you deal with them? This is really almost negligent on your part to consider dealing with them. Did the council, when the council considered the low-income housing on Ninety-seventh and Federal, I spoke in opposition to the number of units proposed, and as well as to the thirty-some exclusions that would be required to have that approved. And I promised councils I would work tirelessly to see that any member that voted for that development would lose their next election, and I did. And I can assure you that I will work equally as hard to see that anybody that votes to approve the development in the uplands loses their next election as well. I promise you that I'll work hard to see that this is your last, your last stint on council. Thank you very much for considering my thoughts. Charles R. Andrews, Westminster, Colorado."
Yeah, my name is Felix Baca, and I'm calling on the upland development proposal that's coming up here on December thirteenth. And I want to voice my concerns with the, with the development and things it will cause to the property values around the area associated with the increase of possible crime, traffic, pollution, increase in water usage, all sorts of different things that will impact the environment and the area in which I live, in the Shaw Heights District. My concern is property taxes also will increase, and it also, it also will bring up the fact that we can no longer view that beautiful landscape as a traditional landmark of the Shaw Heights Westminster District, where it shows the beautiful landscape with the farm and all the land. So my concern is that this development will only bring more problems to the Westminster area that I have listed, and I just want to voice my concerns that I am totally against that development proposal. Thank you.
I live at seven six three zero Knox Court in Westminster, and I'm hearing about this development for uplands to take over this open space where there's a farm over on Federal. And I really am concerned that by bringing seven thousand more people into a living space off of this busy road would be dangerous. I don't feel like it's a great idea at all. I understand that people want to live in Colorado. I understand that, you know, there's a lot of money to be made in housing. And however, this is not the, this is not the area. This is not a good area. I mean, this is literally the only, one of the only open spaces where you actually have a view of the mountains is another reason. And so, really, it would take away from the beauty that that open space is providing, where that farm is. So that would be, like, really unfortunate for this town, where everything there is roads and buildings and, you know, not so many open spaces. So I'd really appreciate if you would, you know, take that into account, and, you know, they can build elsewhere. There is other space elsewhere where communities can be built. I do not feel like this is the best area. I feel like increasing the population would be hazardous, because this road on Federal is a very busy place, where people are traveling from Brewfield to Denver, and by adding that many more people in here, that would create some problems on the roadways. So, my name again is Lauren Dorsey, and I would really appreciate you not approving of this building. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Monica Chavelo. I'm an aspiring artist that lives at the Alto Apartments on Federal Boulevard on West Seventy-first Avenue. I've lived in the village of Greenbrier prior to living here at Alto, and so I know a lot about this neighborhood, that the new high units are going to go up. You know, life hasn't always been easy for me, and I appreciate this opportunity to be given today. At first, I want to say that I had two children that were terminally ill and disabled, and we experienced homelessness. And believe me, it was difficult trying to figure out where we're going to be one day at a time. And so I appreciate the three hundred units of affordable housing that is allocated in the parcel, because it's a lifesaver to many parents that have children that are disabled like mine were. And it's a solution to a big problem of housing that we have in this neighborhood. On another note, I'd like to, I would love to have had my children to be able to walk the parks, the open spaces that are planned to be, I believe that this would have benefited a lot of children in, that are disabled. And I would have loved my children to have been able to be alive today, to walk the gardens and smell the flowers versus cornfields and jumping rats that jump out at you when you're just going out for the night. I would like to say, please, support this project, and it helps create a mix of housing to support those in need, like myself was. I thank you for this time that you give me to speak. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Malia LaSala, and I'm a twenty-year-old student at the University of Colorado Boulder. I was born and raised in Colorado, and I currently reside here in Westminster. I'm calling in support of Westminster Save the Farm, because we already have enough large buildings for housing, and we also have shortages of water in our city, and by putting in these large apartments, we're just going to be losing on more water, and our bills will increase, taxes will increase. Anyways, also, I appreciate the view over there, and I really would hate to see it be covered up by a bunch of large apartment buildings that we really don't need over there. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sean. I live in the corner of West One Thirty-Fourth Avenue in Opelika. I'm calling tonight to express my support for this project for the following reasons. I'm a young professional in Westminster, and the housing market here in Westminster is pricing out many young professionals here. The pricing professional, San Francisco, personal at the home in Westminster is roughly around five hundred K, which seems unfairly grass with high-still loans. I believe this project can help the, help the playing field by providing more attainable housing with more options and opportunities for young professionals, teachers, and our police officers. And another important thing to note is that a huge majority of the proposed residential in Parcel A are maximum of three stories. These hearts are very similar to the surrounding and current neighborhood, which is unlikely to block the views of the mountain views. On that note, please support this application. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good afternoon. My name is William Recktinas. I'm calling today as a Westminster resident of over twenty years and an active member of the Bradburn Homeowners Association. I urge your support today for the uplands community and the forty-seven acres of parks and public land dedication that would be enabled through your approval. Westminster area parks are underfunded, and the city acquisition of open space has dramatically declined in the last few years. The city already owns sixty acres of parks, including in Bradburn, that were promised to residents recreational use but have not yet been developed. My children have been raised in Bradburn and are now in college or preparing to leave for college and have never had the benefit of these parks. Because many existing neighborhoods were built without neighborhood parks, it's very important that council proactively approve housing developments that can provide new parks within ten minutes of their homes, as well as the funding for creation and maintenance of those local parks. At uplands, this will be the first time in a hundred years that these privately-owned lands will be open to the general public. Uplands will bring forty-seven acres of parks, view and park corridors, and also exceed the city's goal for public land dedication. The new public parks at uplands will enable thousands of existing residents living within ten minutes of the community, have access to parks for their children and families to enjoy. I urge you to support and approve the uplands community, the housing it will provide our community, and the five K million dollars in cash and forty acres of donated land for public parks that will help correct the local park deficit. public parks that will help correct the local park deficit. Thank you for your consideration, and I urge you again to approve the Uplands community. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Puler. I'm calling regarding the Westminster farm. On Saturday, I had another moment where it just took my breath away as I was driving down Federal, and the sunlight caught, and I just glanced to the west, and the mountains were completely illuminated, and the farm was glowing kind of golden. It was magnificent. It's heartbreaking to think that that beautiful area of open space could become a giant heat island full of tall buildings, probably many unoccupied, going by the fact that there are lots of unoccupied businesses already in Westminster. There's lots of places in strip malls, just across the street, in fact, there are several empty units that used to hold businesses that didn't make it through the pandemic. There are strip malls everywhere. These are the kind of places that you should be focusing on developing and getting tenants into, or perhaps leveling and creating housing or better urban-type marketplaces, if that's what Westminster is looking to become. I hate the thought of Westminster just becoming another city that's just a scab on the landscape when we have a beautiful historic space. I just, that whole area could use a large park. I know that with a little bit of time and some more research, we could probably find ways to make this area a place that would not only be beautiful, but could somehow provide some kind of economic input into the city, or could be a staved park area. I'm sorry, I have trouble with my words sometimes. I just see this whole thing as just a land grab full of greed. As you drive down Federal North, past the farm, not only on the other side of the street do you see a nearly empty strip mall, but just past Eighty-Eighth, I believe, just past the Circle K, there's a walled-off area that was originally, I assume, supposed to be a somewhat exclusive, single-family home area. If you look in there, there's still some land plots that have not been developed, although the homes that have been built in there are beautiful. To the outside of that along Federal, there's just a red brick wall that's now covered with graffiti. It's an eyesore, and I really do foresee any building on the farm becoming an eventual eyesore. It's also something that won't stand the test of time. The farm has been unique and beautiful for hundreds, thousands of years. It's amazing. Whereas you put some buildings up, and they're going to need to be maintained, or twenty to fifty years from now, what you end up with is a nice little ghetto in the heart of Westminster. So I need you to please consider all of these things. That area is congested with traffic already. There aren't enough schools. If you're planning to have family residences there, you're going to need to probably build another middle school, I would think, at least. And it also adds to a lot of traffic along Eighty-Eighth and Lowell, where children are walking to Shaw Heights Middle School and Flynn Elementary and Sunset Ridge Elementary. I think that this is just a greedy land grab, and I'm horrified to think that you guys would even consider it. We're also, more people are going to have better things to say on this, but with Stanley Lake being our main water supply, its levels were historically low last summer. Here it is, December tenth, and we're just getting our first really wee little bit of snowfall. I don't know how we're going to provide water for thousands more residents in this area. So please consider that.
Hello, my name is Ted Grelle, and I am a homeowner at eight-nine-two-one Hastings Way in Westminster. I'm a Hispanic Native American millennial, and I am deeply opposed to the Uplands development. Developers often claim that they will pay their own way for the cost of infrastructure. However, it is highly unlikely this will be the case, as they have already requested exceptions regarding Metropolitan Special Districts or the MSDs. In two thousand and eighteen, Uplands requested support from Westminster staff for the formation of nine MSDs, as well as a complete exemption or a substantial exemption of the two thousand and four MSD policy established by council. This conversation can be seen in attachments eight and nine in your packet. According to the summary statement prepared for the creation of the two thousand and four policies, MSDs are formed by developers to finance, construct, and maintain public improvements related to a proposed development. The districts have the power to levy at Valrum property taxes and to charge fees. MSDs can be used tax-exempt, finance the cost of constructing and financing the improvements they are building, and the taxes they assess can be used to reimburse the developer for these costs. However, as the summary statement goes on, it says, "City staff has identified several issues of concern as a result of the city's experience involving these kinds of districts, including the following. Number one, the city may or may not benefit from the improvements constructed whereby the developer may benefit beyond the point of public interest of the citizens. Number two, there are definite differences between commercial and residential districts, especially given the nature of the property owners, commercial tenants versus homeowners, and the expertise each group has or does not have with regard to taxing districts. Number three, residents of metro districts paying up to twenty-five mils to a metro district often do not understand why they have to pay this tax when the vast majority of Westminster residents do not. Number four, increased tax burdens on the residents of these districts may or may not come to the attention of the residents and tenants of these districts at the time of purchase. And, number five, a distressed MSD could result in unreasonable mil levy burdens and/or closure of businesses. One of Uplands' big marketing pitches is that they will provide attainable and a small amount of affordable housing, but if MSDs are allowed to take place, the actual cost of future home buyers will be much higher than the sticker price that are shown. This will greatly decrease any supposed cost benefits the development would theoretically offer to future residents. If you ask the applicant about this topic, they will likely receive, or you will likely receive, an answer about how it isn't part of the PDP process. However, I suspect that you will not get a straightforward answer, or one in which the developers say MSDs are not a source of funding they will look to obtain in the future. This proposal greatly affects the current residents of nearby communities, and is abundantly clear that the residents are against it. This is illustrated by the ten thousand signatures to Save the Farm on a change.org petition, as well as over six hundred pages of public comments in your packet, the vast majority of which are against the proposal. Protect the voices, current residents, and also those of future residents who won't know what they are signing up for, and vote no on this application.
My name is Carolyn Glider. I live at eighty-six fifty-three Princeton Street in Shaw Heights. I'm calling to express and record my opposition to the Uplands development. The project does not meet City Code's eleven-five-fourteen-four, or eleven-five-fifteen-five, with focus on the PDP's compatibility or incompatibility with existing development in the surrounding area. Uplands proposes sixty-five-foot-tall buildings, meaning five stories high, along the west and east sides of Federal on Parcell A and C respectively, and in Parcel C along Eighty-eighth Avenue, and in Parcel D along Eighty-fourth Avenue. There are no five-story buildings anywhere in the surrounding area, making these plans extremely incompatible with the existing neighborhoods. In fact, most of the surrounding properties consist of single-story structures whose beautiful views will be completely destroyed by five-story-tall apartment buildings. This has significant impact on the quality of life of residents who've already made Westminster's their homes. According to research by the University of Minnesota, quote, "Viewing scenes of nature reduces anger, fear, and stress, and increases pleasant feelings," unquote. Another important way that the proposed development is not compatible with existing surrounding areas is on the financial level. The Economic Impact Report written by Uplands assumes that within the development, the average for-sale housing value will be five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that the average household income will be a hundred and two thousand dollars. That bears repeating. Uplands assumes that the average, that's the average cost for a housing unit in their development, will be five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, more than half a million dollars. I don't consider that to be affordable or even attainable for most, and certainly it's not compatible with the economic status of the nearby community. In Shaw Heights, where I live, adjacent to Parcel A, the U.S. Census reports the median value of owner-occupied housing units between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and nineteen was just under two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, and the median household income was just over sixty-eight thousand dollars. Even allowing for inflation, the assumptions in the proposal don't come close to the reality of the nearby neighborhood demographics. I also want to point out that Uplands often compares their proposal to the Bradburn Village neighborhood off of a Hundred and Twentieth. There are two obvious and striking differences between these developments. First, Bradburn buildings are not more than three stories in height, and as previously mentioned, Uplands wants to build significantly higher than that. And second, Bradburn borders on Big Dry Creek Open Space, which consists of nearly seven hundred acres of undeveloped land. According to AmericanTrails.org, Westminster's acquisition of this corridor was, quote, "for open space, trail, natural area, and view preservation. Abundant wildlife and native vegetation thrive along the trail corridor, bringing tranquility to this otherwise urban center," unquote. This is quite a contrast when compared to the forty acres of public land dedication, which are not all connected, that Uplands is proposing. Finally, I'd like to point out that the city recently removed the term "next urban center" of the front range from its vision statement, because it no longer reflects the public's desires. What is this proposal if not an effort to create an urban center, which is no longer a vision for the city? These are the wrong developers, and this is the wrong development for this precious land. The gentrification of our neighborhood is not what our community wants. I urge you to hear the voices of your constituents, and please vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Darlene Apalasio. And I have been a resident of Westminster for over fifty years. I am saying no to Upland development. I do not feel we need it. It is perfect the way it is. That takes away our view of our beautiful Rocky Mountains. Once again, I vote no on the Uplands development. We do not need any more housing or any more development. Thank you for your time. My name is Darlene Apalasio. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ryan Shaker. I live on Eighty-first Avenue in Westminster, right next to the Westminster Forum, and I really would like to see it saved, because it is such a beautiful property and such a staple of Westminster. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Hi.
My name is Will Capri George, and I live at thirty-six hundred Chatham Lane, Westminster, Colorado. I wrote you a long letter detailing the many reasons I oppose the Uplands development plan, but the gist of it is that I and almost all of my neighbors oppose the rezoning of Parcel A, because it will be substantially detrimental to the surrounding lands and will effectively ruin our quiet, lovely neighborhood. We bought our homes here because we want to live in a suburb and do not want to live in a city center. I urge you to consider the rezoning of Parcel A with the gravity it deserves, and to disregard the comprehensive plan, as it is really an incomprehensible plan. By wrapping up so many decisions into one package, the city has created a maze that it's almost impossible for residents to navigate. The first decision should be the rezoning. Shouldn't that come before the sale of the land, or at the very least before a proposed development? Unfortunately, Westminster has made this all far too complicated, and in doing so, has shut out the residents. I've looked at many other cities zoning websites, and they all provide explanatory information about comp plans, when applicable, or other zoning exceptions. If you look at the Westminster zoning webpage, there is nothing. It leads people to believe that the zoning is the zoning, which it should be. It states that the area now known as Parcel A is zoned RE, single-family, low-density, and O1, open agriculture. Please remember that the Westminster planning staff has many times pointed out that the comp plan is a living document, because things change, and that the comp plan is not effectively rezoning, because that responsibility falls to city council in full. Things have changed dramatically over the past few years, and we are all seeing things more clearly now. My life has been enriched every day since I moved to Westminster in two thousand and fifteen, and a huge part of that is enjoying the open space, wildlife, and views that are possible because Parcel A exists as it does. Of course, landowners have the right to sell their land, but they have that right with current zoning, which is still RE and O1. Please know that if you make the decision to rezone Parcel A tonight, that this entire part of Westminster will be drastically altered in a negative way forever, and that will be your legacy. Please do not rubber stamp the rezoning because the comp plan uses on it being human. The comp plan should not take precedence over zoning, because it is outdated, overly complicated, ready for developers, and still a living document that can and should change as needed. That means that this decision is fully yours. Please do not approve the rezoning of Parcel A. Finally, I just wanted to point out how many of the supporters of this plan would either financially benefit from it, or who don't even, they don't even live in Westminster. They live nowhere near here. Please do listen to the residents, who will live with your decisions. Thank you for your careful consideration of this very important matter. Thank you.
Hi, this is Derek J. Richmeyer. I live at eighty-nine Ten Grove Street, Westminster, Colorado, and I vote no. You have enough crime in the city as it is. I vote no. Thank you.
Evert Lee Johnston. I am in favor if the owners are in favor of the retail development. My address is eighty-eight eighty Grove Street, Westminster, eight oh oh three one. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Claudia Ford, and I'm calling to urge the city council to vote no on the Uplands development. I grew up down the road from the Pillar of Fire and the adjacent farm, and I hereby humbly but urgently ask that you refrain from approving the proposed Uplands development and vote no until alternate plans can be proposed, developed, and considered. I've sent in an email, but I wanted to read it as well to make sure... I've sent in an email, but I wanted to read it as well to make sure that it is heard and considered. The Westminster farm near the old Pillar of Fire historic landmark is a unique parcel of land deserving care, attention, and imagination when contemplating changes to its current state. A high-density housing development is incongruent with the neighborhood and would spoil an important opportunity to preserve the land in this now surrounding dense metropolitan area. It would also be incongruent with the city's recent planning report that highlights efforts to maintain open spaces and consider water resources as relates to population density. Instead, imagining an open space with some varied use that would maintain the openness and majestic views afforded by it could be a real boon to the neighborhood and surrounding area. For example, the city might consider a modest learning center to honor the history of the first settlers and the farming and agricultural practices that sustained them, along with a parcel for some community gardening, perhaps an Audubon Sanctuary for local and migrating birds, a well-designed network of pathways highlighting the natural grasses and flora of the high plains, no water-needy lawns on this park, please, and a series of interesting outdoor sculptures, some permanent, some rotating, to highlight local and statewide artists, maybe eventually even international artists. This parcel of land could become a highlight of the area. It could be a reason for people going from Denver to Boulder or Boulder to Denver and beyond, a reason to exit Federal Boulevard and take in something providing natural and artistic beauty. Please vote no on a prolonged and disruptive construction plan for this beautiful parcel of land. The history of this part of Westminster deserves to be honored with something unique while maintaining an open space, providing relief in the ever-dense and growing urban landscape. Your courage and thoughtfulness now will pay dividends to current and future residents of the area, as well as to demonstrate the wisdom of preserving open spaces and the imagination to see what it might become and how it can serve the community. Surely, there must be a way for the city and community to pursue a consortium that would forge a wondrous preservation of this land for unique heritage, educational, and community health opportunities and benefits. Whilst the pressure for housing and jobs makes this parcel of land a mouth-watering temptation, once it's gone, it is gone for good, and the rare opportunity to do something different and outstanding in the metascape will have been missed. So now is the time to think differently and make a commitment to find a path forward that is more creative and will serve the neighborhood, city, and metroplex in a truly positive way. Are there not any other parcels of already-developed land that could be converted to updated affordable housing projects on a smaller scale? Here and there, perhaps there are older shopping centers that have seen better days, for example. Real vision could preserve and honor Westminster's heritage while creating a space highlighting the importance of nature and possibly the sculptural arts while maintaining the space for future generations. A place of respite and splendor could become something of award-winning stature, notable, and exemplary of urban planning. For your reference, there is an outdoor art center called Storm King in the Hudson Valley in New York. There is also, very locally in Loveland, Colorado, the celebrated Benson Sculpture Park. I think those are two examples one could look at to inspire consideration for the use of the Westminster farm and maintain its open space. So thank you very, very much for your consideration and for reading and listening to my lengthy plea. And I want to also mention that, speaking of New York, there is a little place called Central Park, which had been built on that land, that city would not be what it is. I suggest that Westminster can honor its heritage by preserving that parcel of land and creating something truly inspirational.
Five minutes in length. If the system detects more than five seconds of silence, it will disconnect. Remember, you must state your full name during the message in order for it to be played during the meeting. Thank you.
I am calling to recommend that the Westminster City Council not approve the proposed upland subdivision. I am Leo Tanguuma, Chicano muralist, who has murals on the environment at the Denver International Airport. My murals, entitled "In Peace and Harmony With Nature, created nineteen ninety-five", show the devastation of climate change, including forest fires and the extinction of animal species. At the same time, however, these murals depict the rehabilitation of our natural environment. My murals on this subject have been greatly appreciated and accepted by viewers and passengers traveling through Denver from all over the world. Climate change is real. One has only to think about the recent forest fires in the western United States that have burned thousands of acres and have often caused our skies in Colorado to be full of smog. Yesterday, devastating tornadoes struck the central part of the United States with the death toll mounting to over forty. Hurricanes have also increased substantially in recent years and have created tremendous devastation. Given this climate crisis, it is critical for us to combat climate change. One way we can do this is to maintain our open spaces and increase our public lands. Green spaces are needed for animals, migrating birds and butterflies, as well as for recreational purposes. The Centennial Farm represents a tremendous opportunity for the people of Westminster to increase their green space by two hundred and thirty-three acres and to do their part to combat climate change. I, along with many other Arvada residents, have enjoyed Arvada's green spaces. I am hopeful that Westminster, where my stepson Carl and his wife Neelam and their three children live, will preserve the wonderful farm and develop more open space. Finally, I am concerned about who the upland's development would benefit. The plan only allows for forty acres of public land. The development means that Westminster's open spaces would be sacrificed so that developers can make huge profits. At the same time, citizens of Westminster would be denied significant open space. I urge you to vote no on the upland's development project. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Jean Stanford Tanguuma, and I'm calling to urge the Westminster City Council not to approve the proposed upland's development project. My husband Leo Tanguuma and I live in nearby Arvada, next to a beautiful green space, and truly appreciate being able to take long walks along the nature trail by the creek. My son, daughter-in-law, and three grandchildren live in Westminster, close to the farm that is under construction for the upland's development project. This wonderful two hundred and thirty-three-acre centennial farm is ideal for conversion to open space for the residents of Westminster. I am deeply concerned about climate change. One has only to think about the terrible forest fires that we have experienced in the western United States during the last few years. Our usually beautiful blue Colorado skies have frequently been covered with smog due to the fires. Yesterday's tornadoes in Kentucky and in the central United States have caused devastation throughout the area, and the death toll is mounting to over seventy people. Climate change is real. It is critical that we maintain green spaces for animals, plants, migrating birds, and butterflies, as well as for recreational purposes for residents. The farm is a wonderful opportunity to increase Westminster's open space. I'm concerned that the upland's project would benefit developers at the expense of the residents of Westminster, including my son and his family. Westminster should do its part to combat climate change and provide more green space for its residents to enjoy. Therefore, I urge you to vote no on the upland's development project. Thank you.
Hello, this is Dan Mider. Save the Farm.
Hi, I'm Susan Clara. I live in Legacy Ridge, and I would like the farm to be kept for open space and parks and not for seven thousand new residents. Thank you.
My name is Dai Liao. I'm a Lakewood resident, so I object to the upland's rezoning application. If a comprehensive plan does not consider the past and the future of the city and does not listen to the community, then it is just a canvas for developers and an advertisement space for ambitious politicians and high city staff. The farm represents the past of the city. It has retained the original look of the city from when Westminster was founded a century ago. An anti-conservation yes vote means destroying your own namesake, cutting your own roots, and becoming a sad, generic suburb town that nobody cares about and has nothing interesting to offer. The farm represents the future of the city in an era when sustainability has been identified as the key for future living. An anti-progress, an anti-beddingment yes vote means repeating the kind of urbanization mistakes we have been making in the past decade. So a yes vote goes against both conservation and progress. It is completely filled by greed. The reason we have zoning laws is to try to achieve a balance between the private property rights of the owner and those of the neighbors. The reality we have to see is that this is a dense area where the activities on one property have a direct impact on the neighboring one. There are no absolute private property rights in a suburban area. The rule says in order to change the use of one property, you have to hear what the neighbors have to say. Now, if the neighbors all have objections, but the governing body still allows it to happen, then why do we even need this theater of public hearing in the first place? Just let the high class have the power of people's lives and property already. This community is all for private property rights. The property owner still has the freedom to sell the land to anyone. What we have been talking about in the past two years is the land use, which has been locked in place by the zoning code. The community was just asserting its rights granted by our zoning law. The one who will actually violate the private property rights left and right is the developer who wants to change the land use and alter the environment and the living conditions of an established neighborhood. It is absurd for people to use the "always platter for high-density housing" argument. It shows that those people do not respect the history of Westminster nor the longstanding use precedents of this land. It also shows that those people do not live in a reality when time has proven to us that the best use of this land is to keep it natural and pristine, so its natural, historical, and societal values can be appreciated. Enough objections from all perspectives against uplands have been expressed in the past two years, and if it still cannot help the council make the right decision, then it means that there are bigger problems in our decision-making process that we need to worry about. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Crystal Wykoff. My address is eighty-nine sixty Issica Way, Westminster, Colorado, eight oh oh three one, and I am for saving the Westminster farm. We now have well over ten thousand signatures on Save the Farm ballot, so that should say something right there. That means you, City of Council of Westminster, have to listen to us as a whole, and I believe there is a law about that somewhere. If there is a well over so many signatures that are against something, then that something is the farm, which means we, the residents of Westminster, have won the fight, and you can't go against us on this by how many signatures we have. I was also talking to some other Westminster residents that are for saving the farm. I asked them, what if we all gave twenty dollars a month to help save the farm? They all loved my idea, so I am bringing before you, the City Council, that means there is a hundred and sixteen thousand residents in the city of Westminster and including unincorporated Adams County, like Shaw Heights neighborhood. So that would be two million, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a month, and it would be twenty-seven million, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars a year to help save the Pillar of Fire farm. A bunch of residents are willing and ready to jump on board, and they are saying, where do we sign up for this? So think about it, guys. Doesn't that sound like a great idea? Hello? Yes? So please, just think about it. Please. And also, what about planting some extra trees on the farm to help clean our air that we breathe? I mean, think about it. It's a good ecosystem, I think. It'd be great. So, yeah, I mean, I think would be great for our city, our unincorporated residents, to help pitch in. I mean, we're all on board for this, so please, just think about it. And, you know, in light of Christmas, come on, it's Christmas, guys. Christmas, that's what Christmas is about. Give us, people, the residents of Westminster, a big Christmas gift. Please. Merry Christmas, everybody, and Happy New Year, and be blessed, and just give us a big Christmas gift. Okay? You know you love us, right? Yeah. Okay, I'll stop. Love y'all. Merry Christmas. May you be blessed. Bye.
Hello, Mayor. Mayor Bautam and City Council. My name is Ken Sarnell, and I live on Wolf Court and Westfield Village. I'm leaving this message to voice my support for the upland project. After I was born, my parents moved to Westminster to buy a home where we could raise me and my brothers. That was in nineteen fifty-two. I turned seventy this year, and I'm not sure there are many citizens in Westminster who can say they've been here that long. My wife and I bought our first home together in southwest Westminster and raised two girls there. I followed in my dad's footsteps and was a volunteer firefighter for twenty years before the city had a paid professional force. Together, we served the city for forty years. My daughter taught in an elementary school in Westminster and still lives here today with my two grandchildren. My wife ran a daycare in the city and then worked for a small local business here where she just recently retired. We've stayed here because of the quality of life, which includes parks, open space, walking and biking trails, and access to restaurants, shops, and services. The city has changed a lot in my seventy years here, but for the most part, it's been greatly improved with the growth we've seen. And what I've noticed, what I've never been, want to try to stop progress or keep others from moving here. My family was welcomed here seven decades ago, and I'd like to continue welcoming new families to our community. And that's what I like to, that's what I like about the uplands. Their vision welcomes everyone, whether you're a senior like me looking to downsize or soon you'll be someone like my niece who is renting but can't afford to buy and is looking farther north for her first home. We urgently need more housing to keep our community thriving and to keep our local businesses strong. And to have forty-seven acres of parks is amazing. I live across the street from the Westfield Village Park, and it's incredible amenity. I am happy that people who live in and around the upland will have this access to several parks and trails that will connect them to the Highlands. This area of Westminster needs to have more parks and exactly what the upland will deliver. So I hope you vote yes for this project. As a longtime resident who has watched southern Westminster deteriorate, it's past time to reinvest in our community, in our people, and in our businesses. Thank you.
Yes, this is Don Widener. I live at eighty-eight thirty-one Issica Way, and no to upland's development. I do not want anything over in that open field. So once again, Don Widener, phone number's three oh three five six two seven six eight nine. And once again, I say no to upland's development. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Randall Dean Castro. My address is forty-three ninety-seven West Hundred Seventh Place, and I am urging the City Council to oppose the development of the uplands on the old Westminster farm. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lucy Seber, S.E.B.E.R. I live at five four zero eight West Hundred Seventh Court in Westminster. I want to thank you for the opportunity to voice my opposition to the upland's development slated for construction between- between eighty-fourth and eighty-eighth and Lowell and Federal Boulevards. First off, I am not a NIMBY. Uplands is not my backyard, nor is it in my neighborhood. I believe uplands represents an architectural and environmental affront to our community. The developer, Oriad Capital and Development, proposes a community of approximately six thousand people. So, let's vacate the population of Estes Park and relocate them here. Infrastructure, not an issue according to Oriad. The truth is, our infrastructure is groaning. Our roads are crumbling and beyond congested. Water, we have been told by city powers that if we conserve water, there'll be ample resources for growth. One cannot if one's way out of a mega drought. We are told that our senior water rights are at a hundred and ten percent. Truth is that farmers and ranchers have the most senior water rights, and a hundred and ten percent of zero is a big fat zero. Many of us replied to the twenty-twenty Westminster Community Survey that we did not see an urban corridor as part of our vision. Thankfully, that was deleted, so why now are we pursuing that intolerable objective? The only vision for uplands is a bad case of developers' myopia. I know that I am not alone in my opposition. I have the backing of over ten thousand petition signatories and over six hundred pages of supporting material. On a personal note, I hold a master's degree in community leadership. I am an advocate for service leadership, meaning that a leader is defined by what he or she gives and not gains. In that regard, I have to say that those involved with Save the Farm are prime examples of service leadership. Save the Farm has waged a civic discourse that has been both factual and strategic. They have given this community a strong voice. In fact, they should be celebrated. It is now the task for our city to continue this service leadership.
Hi, my name is Lana Cangelosi. I live with my family on the corner of Oakwood and Shaw Boulevard. We have a family. We've had to build a fence on our property due to the high volume of traffic that we have through this intersection. This intersection are the two main veins that, you know, feed into Shaw Heights down here. My kids also go to the Flynn Mazano Academy. And with the prospects of developing the farmland out here, my main concern is traffic, one, traffic. Just because there's going to be a lot more cars speeding down Shaw Boulevard, and there's always, always almost a crash at this intersection. When I moved here, I tried to get a stop sign put in, and it was denied. So, there's always constantly accidents, so my main concern is with the prospects of building large amounts of housing. It's just going to increase traffic more so. And then I think, of course, we're all worried about water, water rates, and what that looks like if there's multiple homes going in. I think it's great to, you know, develop for neighbors that can utilize resources, the neighbors that are already here. But, yeah, just packing in condos, kind of similar to what they did out in the Highlands. We left North Denver just due to the density. We came out here to Westminster to enjoy a little bit less density. So, please just take into consideration the safety of the children who are walking to and from school. And the school, Flynn Mazano, is adjacent to the property, as well as Crown Point Royal, but I don't know how those kids would safely utilize that across federal. So, traffic, let's just take into consideration increased volume of traffic and what that would look like for all of our neighbors that live here. Great, thank you again, Lana Cangelosi. And I live on a corner lot here, off of Shaw Boulevard and Oak. Thank you so much.
Hi, this is Peter Lefari, Executive Director, Maker Housing Partners, the housing authority of Adams County. I am calling today to talk to the city council. I have been writing and speaking to you today in support of the proposed uplands development project. As mentioned, I'm the Executive Director of Maker Housing Partners, a socially conscious public housing authority committed to empowering people and strengthening communities. Maker supports this project for several reasons. First off, Adams County is experiencing an acute housing shortage. With the average cost of rent of a two-bedroom apartment in Westminster this November of one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, a deeply concerning increase of sixteen point five percent compared to November of twenty-twenty, our housing supply is simply not meeting the demand. To address this untenable housing market, we must begin building our way out of this shortage. And the uplands project will add over two thousand three hundred homes, many targeting the size and price range, which is in short supply. Secondly, uplands will be providing nearly five hundred units of affordable and attainably priced homes, which are also in extremely short supply. Maker believes the uplands is an example of a responsible development and will be a catalyst for equitable growth in a historically under-invested community. As such, Maker is a partner on the uplands project, and we are excited to develop up to seventy affordable housing units serving Westminster residents earning between thirty to seventy percent of the area median income. Additionally, Maker intends for this community to focus on serving hearing and visually impaired residents, as Coloradans living with a disability disproportionately struggle with extreme housing burden. That is, those that pay more than fifty percent of their income on their housing costs. In closing, projects like uplands do not come around all that often and should be implemented responsibly. We believe the uplands team has done a tremendous job through their community engagement and design process. We are happy to support and partner with them on this vital project. We hope and urge you to do the same. Please feel free to contact me with any questions or comments. Thank you for your time, Peter Lefari.
Hi, my name is Michael Isbell. I've been a resident of Westminster for over twenty-six years, and prior to that, I was born in Denver and lived off of Ninety-Fourth and Federal in the early sixties for another five years. So, I've been in this neighborhood longer than any neighborhood within the Denver metro area. I would like to voice my opinion on the Save the Westminster Farm project. I understand that the city of Westminster is looking for revenue, but you need to understand also that we have water issues that are happening every year. We're developing part of the promenade, and that's going to also be more residential in apartments. We seem to be building more and more apartments and adding more and more mouths to drink water and to cook and everything else that's happening in this city. And with the infrastructure that you guys claim is going down and that we need to spend more and more money, we have such high water rates as it is, if you're going to have more people using this water, the rates are only going to increase even more and more because the volume of water is going to increase. You need to understand that this project is not a good project for the city of Westminster. Other projects may be better, but what you're planning or what is planned for that area is not what the city of Westminster needs. I would really like my voice heard and understand that this is not what the council needs to approve. There are a lot of other things that we can look at to do with this land besides adding more and more people to such a small area. Not only does that affect the traffic, but it affects the quality of life within and around the city. So, that's where I stand on this. I'd appreciate you taking into consideration what I have voiced and do the right thing and not put this in place. Vote this down. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tracy Yang, and I was just calling to leave a voicemail in regards to the development of the land on eighty-eighth and Lowell, between Lowell and Federal, just calling to support the development and hope that there will be a shopping center, primarily like a grocery store, more parks, and provide an increase in the value of our homes. Again, my name is Tracy Yang, and I'm a resident of the city of Westminster. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Yes, my name is Eric Wyckoff, eighty-nine sixty Issica Way. At this hearing, O'Reed Capital will state that the developer will pay their own way for the cost of infrastructure. The developer has no intentions of paying for infrastructure, but will have all the residents of the uplands development pay the developer back with interest and fees for improvements through their request for a metropolitan special district. Largely unregulated metro tax districts can double a homeowner's tax burden. On several occasions, I have heard Chad Ellington state that metro tax districts are part of the developer's toolbox. As early as two thousand eighteen, O'Reed Capital has requested an MSD from the city. As far back as two thousand eighteen, O'Reed Capital has tried to jump the line and request exceptions to the city policies on MSDs, requesting pre-approval for an MSD before the PDP. And O'Reed Capital has requested an exception to the mill levy cap as outlined in the city charter. This is in Attachment eight and nine of the city council's agenda packet. While city staff and city council rejected O'Reed's request for jumping the line, this is just one example of what the city will be in for is to vote to approve this development. This is just one more example of the developer's intentions and half-truths and what is actually proposed. This is the wrong time and definitely the wrong developer. Please vote no on the uplands.
Hi, my name is John Wu. I live at nine one four four Lander Street in Westminster, and I just wanted to call to support the uplands project. In the Mong community, we have a summer festival every year, and we usually have it at Shaw Heights Middle School. And I think it would be good if we had another park where we could host it at. And so, I just wanted to call to support the uplands project, and that's it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yang Li Loar, and I am a member of the Mong community here in Colorado. I'm calling now to express my support for an understanding of the significance of affordable housing. Westminster was formerly a popular meeting spot for the Mong community and where they can also raise their family, but due to a scarcity of affordable housing in the region, many members of the Mong community have relocated to locations that are further apart. We used to have a central center and hub and location, but it no longer exists at this time, and that was actually in Westminster. I do believe that we must be proactive, especially in the light of the surge of Asian hate crimes and inflation. We shouldn't have to wait until a community is completely locked by poverty or homelessness before considering affordable housing as an option in a city. Thank you so much for taking my comment today.
Hi, my name is Ellen Buckley, and I'm calling in to oppose the uplands proposal and ask you all to please vote no. At the very least, postpone any decision until you all have had a chance to look at and approve the new comp plan two thousand forty, hopefully with some changes to it, taking better account of climate change and the extreme drought we're in now and will obviously continue to be in in the future. We cannot pretend we have water for this. This development alone will add a minimum additional three hundred and forty-six acre-feet of water usage a year, and that doesn't even include any outside watering. That also doesn't include any of the other developments recently built or approved. Those all are going to use more water. We don't have the water, we won't have the water. The decision in two thousand thirteen to convert this dryland farmland to Timond was deeply flawed, as Timond is completely incompatible with existing neighborhoods. I live two blocks from this high-density proposal and know no one in this area would have supported that change had any outreach been done in two thousand thirteen. You must agree with that, given that over ten thousand people have signed a petition opposing this awful development. This development has been described as providing missing-middle housing and is attainable housing. I don't know many middle-class folks who can afford six hundred thousand dollar houses. And attainable is a meaningless word. Attainable for who? Additionally, the plans don't include any accessibility or even visitability requirements. Tiny lot homes of three stories above garages are not accessible for people in wheelchairs. The water usage and traffic projections are based on artificially low resident numbers and don't take into account the nearby increased population and existing housing stock. Just on my street, I've seen several houses where the number of people living in them has doubled or even quadrupled from what it was, say, five years ago. Also, the vehicle numbers have doubled and quadrupled. Cutting off the mountain views entirely from Federal is completely unacceptable, as is destroying the views west of Lowell on Parcel B. The land on top of the hill at Eighty-Second and Lowell should all be dedicated public land. This spot where the community gathers to watch sunsets or stop during the day just to gaze at the mountains is really important to this existing community. You should not agree to annex this parcel unless it will be dedicated. There has to be an agreement, all that will be dedicated for public park. It's not acceptable to allow them to profit at the expense of everybody else. Allowing payment in lieu of public land is also unacceptable. To allow this development to go forward without the full amount of required parkland, which is already terribly low, is unacceptable. Please give consideration to John Carpenter's twelve-seven letter in your packets. He has many things to say about the details of this development. I oppose it in its entirety, but if you were to approve it, you can't approve it as it is. It's ridiculous. We residents unfortunately don't have thousands of dollars to spend opposing this development. The developer can come in and say things like, "We're going to honor the history of the land by, you know, there will be agriculture." No, there won't be agriculture. A community garden of, say, twenty community beds for seven thousand people is nothing about, that's not agriculture, it's not honoring land. We're asking you to give our concerns as your citizens, your residents, who already live here, more weight than a developer who just is interested in making money, because that's what developers do. This is not a good fit for the community. We can't afford to have this. High-density development is soul-crushing. It's not healthy for folks, and it does not at all fit in with the city, especially not this neighborhood. I urge you, please, please, vote no. Thank you.
My name is Laura Noakes Lang. I have resided at eighty-one fifty La Place Court, Westminster, Colorado, eight zero zero three one, for about the last fifty-three years. I love where I live. I have watched the development in the area over the years, and for the most part, the infill has fallen into two categories, very nice and very concerning. I grew up in Queens, New York, one of the two boroughs of New York City on Long Island. During my high school years, my family lived- During my high school years, my family lived in Manhasset, just far enough away from the city line to be nice. To the point, based on my past living experience, I think the city of Westminster is turning into a mini Queens. I would say that the low-cost apartments in Queens were more attractive than the ugly boxes being built in Westminster these days. All of my family and friends moved away from Queens as soon as they could, except the ones who are buried there. This brings me to my next point. How about shutting down this proposed Uplands development for approximately 2,500 living persons, who will generate noise, traffic pollution, need for more city services such as police and fire protection, strain on the water supply, and more? Instead, have the city buy the land for a cemetery. Westminster doesn't have a big cemetery. When we die, we have to leave our hometown to be buried somewhere far away. Westminster Cemetery could be a lovely cemetery with trees, quiet and small pavilions here and there. I visualize a beautiful place to visit the departed and spend some time in peace. Some of the land could be used for public parkland or saved for open space. I remember the late Mayor Vai Jun lamenting Westminster's lack of a cemetery, but nothing happened to resolve the problem. The city might be able to negotiate installment purchase plan with the church and could get some return on investment through sale of plots and maintenance fees. The church could be happy to sell the land and be free from farming it. The neighbors would be happy to have a clean, beautiful, and quiet place to look at, one that doesn't generate more traffic most days. The only unhappy people would be the developers, who would simply pack up and move on to their next project. Or maybe the city would have them design the cemetery. Think about it. I think this is a good solution to two problems: the very unhappy neighbors of the proposed development and the city not having a cemetery. Thanks for listening.
Hello, my name is Su-Yang Vu and I am the president of HSA of Colorado, which stands for Mong Student Association of Colorado. Something about HSA is that we like to promote the Mong culture through community events and through community services. Something else that HSA strives for is higher education within the Mong youth. First and foremost, I would like to thank Jasper Vu for inviting me to represent the younger generation, especially in the Mong community. With this housing development that is being proposed, and my belief, I truly think it would benefit the Mong community, especially within the youth, because as a current college student, something that you think of after college is where you want to reside and if you would like to move out of state or stay in state. With me personally, the Mong Colorado community has been, has made such a big impact in my life and, you know, with Colorado's high housing market, it is very difficult to seek houses that are affordable. And I know a lot of my peers, cousins, friends, who struggle in finding housing after college. And, you know, with the Mong community here, something that we do value is getting a house once you are married after college and all that. And with one of my cousins I know, he just got married, got out of college, and what he can only afford right now is an apartment for him and his wife. And he does get a lot of backlash from the elders for not getting a house. And I think the only reason why the elders would do that is just to, just because of the tradition of always, you know, having a stable house is something that is very valued in our culture. And, yeah, with the housing development, it would definitely benefit a lot of us, especially in the younger generation here. And with Colorado's Mong community, I'm not saying that it isn't the best, but recently, you know, people who used to live in Colorado, you know, the Mong community was really strong when the housing was more affordable. And because of the high market, a lot of them did move out of state, which made our Mong community here a lot weaker. And something that I'm very passionate about is, you know, the Mong community sticking together and, you know, keeping our culture alive. And, you know, I would really like for the Mong community to gather all together and, you know, it's, yeah, to make it more relevant with this housing project, you know, it would bring a lot of families together and it built the community once again. And then with the proposed office spaces that would be built, it would benefit the Mong organizations here in Colorado, such as HMAC and my organization, my organization, HSA. It would be a great resource and would benefit us a lot, just because for HSA, we host a lot of general body meetings and a lot of activities and socials for the community. And with COVID especially, it's harder to find a location for all of us to utilize and to gather. And since we don't have resources like that, we would have to use, you know, member houses and, you know, make their houses more vulnerable for COVID. So, not saying that COVID is one of the reasons why it would be more beneficial for the office spaces to be used, but as well as, you know, just keeping that community here, you know, developing it to make it stronger like how it used to. And I believe that, you know, with the housing project, with the office spaces all together, it's just going to benefit the Mong community and not just the Mong community itself, but, you know, other ethnicities, races as well, and bring us all afloat.
My name is Rosie Merida. I am nine years old. I live on Circle Drive. I go to school at Flynn. The farm is right in front of the school building. Won't be good for the kids. I want to save the farm so animals can live there and kids can see the farm forever. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Neelam Grover Merida. I live on Circle Drive in Westminster, where I have been a resident for almost 20 years with my husband and three children, aged 20, 17, and 9. My parents immigrated from India to London, England, where I was born and raised. Then after meeting and marrying my husband, I decided to move to Colorado. I love living in Westminster because of the stunning views, open space, diversity, and original charm of the neighborhood. As a teacher in Westminster, I work firsthand with children, parents, and teachers, so I am aware of the challenges they face and what they want and need. Therefore, I would like to focus my comments on how the Uplands proposal is full of unrealistic promises and does not meet the criteria for approval. Specifically, criteria 11-5-14, numbers 5 and 6. The proposal will have significant adverse effects on the surrounding area. Uplands says that they will be adding sidewalks on Lowell. Let me get this straight. We can get sidewalks along Lowell and Federal, but only if the farm is paved over? Are we to believe that teachers will be able to afford the houses in Uplands? Teachers are having trouble affording to live in the neighborhood now. Housing currently being built in the area starts at $500,000. These homes include little to no outdoor space. Kids need parks and open spaces for healthy development. Uplands offers drainage ditches instead. Uplands promises 300 housing units that are attainable. Key word there is attainable. Attainable is not the same as affordable. The promised amount of attainable homes wouldn't even house a fraction of the teachers in Westminster public schools. Once again, the proposal is big on promises and low on substance. The Shaw Heights neighborhood is diverse with 40% being Latino and 50% requiring free or reduced lunch. What will happen to the current residents as Uplands starts selling houses ranging from $500,000 to $800,000? Current residents will be forced out and then we will just become another cookie cutter neighborhood. This process is commonly known as gentrification. The most illogical Uplands promise is that the developer promises to reserve space for making healthy food available to students and the local community. Are they serious? They are going to replace the existing farm with another smaller farm? Where are they going to put the community farm? It will probably be placed in the drainage ditch where all the other garbage from Uplands will end up. As a teacher and longtime resident of Westminster, I ask you to vote no on the Uplands proposal or at the very minimum, vote for a continuance. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Brett Woodcock. I am a resident of Westminster and I'm just calling to say I am against the development of the farm, especially into high-density housing. There's so many better uses of this land that can be done. Please don't let this happen. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Jurgensen. I have lived in Westminster for years and I'm calling to oppose the rezoning of the farm and the Uplands development. I stand with the vast majority of my neighbors who moved here for the residential suburban nature of Westminster. And sure, there are opportunities for growth and there are rights for property owners to sell their property, but not in a massive irresponsible way like this. We should be optimizing the community that we have here, not destroying what longtime Westminster residents have invested in and valued for all these many years. Please vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Theodore Jelsom. I think it'd be a great pity to lose the farm and I really think it would be bad for Westminster. Please keep the farm. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jay Scott and this is my testimony for the meeting on December 13th to the Westminster City Council. I'm writing to you today to express my support of the Uplands development project. I work as an English teacher at Crown Point Academy, located on Federal and 86th Avenue. I joined the Crown Point family a few years ago. I was a young teacher in my mid-20s, leaving the only home I had ever known, the Riverlands of northwest Missouri. I had taught for several years at a small school in a small town called Oregon, population 968. I loved being a teacher, but I was ready to experience a bigger place. Colorado was where I wanted to be. I packed a U-Haul and moved to Colorado in 2018. Colorado was everything I had hoped it would be: amazing hikes in natural beauty, a bustling city life in downtown Denver, and tons of interesting people my age. Very different and exciting compared to the town I had lived and worked in, which boasted just under 1,000 residents. However, living in Colorado also brought a few things I wasn't quite prepared for: a hellacious commute and exorbitant living costs. I don't think I will shock anyone by saying that teachers don't receive the most fantastic of salaries, and I found that affording modest living arrangements was quite the challenge, one that I still experience to this day. And the lack of affordable housing near my school forces me to make a stressful drive during peak traffic hours twice every single day. I turned 30 this year and it made me reevaluate many things in my life. I want to start a family and continue to teach at the school I love. Approval of the Uplands development project could make that happen for me and also increase the quality of life for many others in the area. Affordable housing and economic growth in this area are crucial to ensure Westminster citizens' advancement, success, and overall happiness. Sincerely, Jay Scott.
Yes, hello. My name is Barbara Williams and I am a resident of Westminster. My zip code is 80031. And I live on the border of neighborhoods between Skyline Village and Sunset Ridge. So I'm calling to protest the Uplands development for many reasons which I'm going to now tell you. One of the main things for me is the traffic. How much more traffic is going to be up and down all these streets between Lowell and Federal? Also, the issue that I have with the traffic is that I do not believe that CDOT has signed off on what they are considering to be the improvement that should help the traffic flow. I'm assuming that there's a reason why CDOT hasn't signed off and I think that council should not approve this until you know why. Also, there is some questions about drainage and the water flow, because it starts at the top of the hill and continues down. And from what I understand, there are already issues around the water drainage. And I don't believe that there has been a sign off for what they want to do there either. Pollution is another reason, not only the air pollution in that area, but also the noise pollution. The amount of people in traffic is really going to impact the lives of the people who already live here. And we also have other malls and housing developments that have been built that are just standing. The Big Westminster Mall, billions of dollars have been spent there, while others in the area are complaining about retail. We have retail sitting there that obviously is too expensive and also housing, which was supposed to be based on affordable housing. So do I believe that the developers really plan to make it affordable here? No, I don't. Nor do I believe that they will respect the community request for what's needed. One reason to support that is that the lack of the parks in the area for kids to walk to, for families to play in. What they're proposing doesn't meet with the city councilors, the city agreements. There's supposed to be a certain amount and there isn't. And what they want to put in there is not going to meet the requirements for Westminster city agreements. The fact that I have seen where other developers have not respected those community issues. There's one that has to do with the college down south, where they were supposed to keep all the trees in the area and they didn't. They cut them down. I'm hearing about places in Aurora where they're building and building and building and now there are issues there. These developers say all the things that we want to hear, but they don't, they don't fulfill it. They don't do what they say they're going to do. Pardon me with that phone call. Also, we have just voted on open space to be approved for the city of Westminster. So I would rather see Flynn go to make that a big, beautiful, open space that would meet all the requirements we need without causing all of the pollution and other issues in that area. The money's there. There's no reason for it to not be developed into an open space or to have something else more practical done with it. The last thing we need is more apartments and housing that are just going to sit there and be filled or not filled, maybe, because they're quote, "supposed to be affordable." So please put my vote, my concerns as a community resident that's lived here over 20 years, that I do not want Uplands and I hope that you will vote no tonight.
Hello, my name is Jerry Coin. Dear council members, I am vehemently opposed to the Uplands development. While I have many concerns, I will focus my topic on the traffic issues that are bound to happen and therefore do not meet city codes. Currently from this property, there is only access on Lowell- Currently from this property, there is only access on Lowell Boulevard, Federal Boulevard, and Eighty-Eighth and Eighty-Fourth Avenues. Even though the developer is proposing other outlets from the development, they will all end up on the above-mentioned streets. These streets cannot possibly adequately handle the traffic that the development would cause. There is no way that an additional four thousand plus vehicles can be accommodated on these existing streets. Currently, these streets are extremely busy and especially so during the rush hour. Cars are backed up for several blocks, but even a larger concern is the safety of schoolchildren and family members. Every morning and afternoon, cars are backed up while parents are delivering or picking up their children at school. This occurs at Shaw Heights Middle School and John Flynn Elementary School. In addition, further north on Eighty-Eighth Avenue is another elementary school named Mesa located at nine one zero zero Lowell Boulevard. The only way to reach the elementary schools is on Lowell Boulevard and Shaw Heights Middle School is very near Lowell. Additionally, I am concerned about the Westminster Fire and Rescue Department located at ninety-one fifty Lowell Boulevard. With all the additional traffic, emergency service will definitely be impacted. It was very apparent at the planning committee meeting that the majority of people speaking in favor of this project would gain monetarily. This is so wrong. Many of them do not live in this area. This development is not compatible or harmonious with the existing neighborhood, meaning also it does not meet city codes. People who live in this community should have a strong voice in this matter. A petition on Change Org to save the farm and for the Uplands proposal to be denied currently has over ten thousand signatures. Additionally, Westminster's twenty twenty Community Survey reported that six out of ten residents found too much growth to be a concern and almost three times as many residents said the impact on density and quality of life was negative compared to those who felt it was positive. Please listen to those who you are tasked with representing and please, please, please do not allow this horrible plan to happen. Thank you for listening.
Hello, my name is Misty West and I live in the Bishop Park area. I am very concerned about the high-density traffic you're planning for the field just north of me. It already takes, I have to leave fifteen to twenty minutes early if I need to get onto Eightieth going east or it's just ridiculous. I don't understand how you're gonna do it. There's too much traffic, the streets aren't wide enough, you're already complaining about water usage. I get a nasty letter every year and yet you're trying to tell me that the tap fees will cover the water these places use and that they're gonna be, oh, very water efficient. Well, you can't have that many people who don't use water and they all pay at a flat rate and then you turn around and criminalize me even though I pay my water bill every year. I own six lots. So at this point, it's just ridiculous. Traffic is too bad, there's not enough water, and you're just gonna cram more people in without any mitigation to our narrow streets, lack of safety lights. The intersection at Eighty-Fourth and Federal is already a death trap. I just don't understand how you think we're gonna fit that many more people into this small of an area. Please stop.
Hi, my name is Patricia Babbitt and I'm calling this morning to please ask everybody on city council to save the Westminster farm and not allow the Uplands Project to destroy this precious piece of land. As water conservationist Gary Walkner and nature photographer John Fielder and numerous members of the Save the Farm group, including countless others in the Westminster community have expressed, this is a precious parcel of land that needs to be left intact. By developing it in ways that have been proposed in the Uplands Project, this destruction will surely have enormous predictable and possibly unpredictable negative consequences for those living both near the farm as well as others who live far away. Please, please, please listen to your constituents and stop courting the big developers. Please vote no to this horrendous development. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Westminster City Council. My name is Wayne Anderson. I live at eight eight six zero Cody Street in Westminster. I am a Westminster resident and business owner. The purpose of this message is to let you know that I support the Uplands Project. My support is based on a number of reasons. First, there are many development projects where the residents in the area have little or no knowledge about the project or the impact of the project on their neighborhood. In contrast, the Uplands developers has held over two hundred community meetings. Greater than six percent of those meetings, or over a hundred and thirty, were with neighborhood residents as well as adjourned property owners. The rest were held with community participants such as the Westminster Public Schools, the Westminster Historical Society, and many community nonprofits. In addition, their community engagement expanded to regional organizations such as Adams County, Regional Utilities, and other governmental entities. As a result, they've been able to garner support from residents and community leaders, housing advocates, and business leaders in the area. I support the Uplands Project from an economic perspective as well. I believe there will be a positive impact to the city of Westminster. The city stands to realize approximately seventy million dollars in taxes and fees. There'll be over thirty million in water and tap fees and approximately three million in annual tax revenues. It is also estimated that over three thousand permanent jobs will be created because of the Uplands Project. A significant amount of space will be available for new offices, rent, retail, restaurants, and other commercial enterprises. In addition, once the Uplands Project is built out, it is estimated that over sixteen million dollars annually will be available for Westminster Public Schools. I believe that those numbers to be significant. Finally, I support the Uplands Project because of its focus on water conservation and sustainability. There has been much discussion about water usage and the cost of that usage to our residents. It is anticipated that the homes created by the Uplands Project will be using approximately thirty percent less water than the average Westminster home. This could be a savings of millions of gallons of water. The developers are able to accomplish this with their use of smart meter technology. This will help to lessen the impact of the cost of water to the future residents. As a result of the aforementioned topics, I believe the Uplands Project would be extremely positive for the city of Westminster. Therefore, I strongly support the approval of the Uplands Project and hope that you will also. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Widmer and I'm calling to just voice my opposition to the Uplands Project. I am not opposed to development there, but I am opposed to the size of that development. We don't have enough water. Look at the water rates now, the traffic is horrific as it is. So, and you know, I just don't even trust the developers or necessarily the process of the way this whole thing has come to fruition. Thanks a lot. Bye.
Hello, my name is Dev Bishop. I am a longtime resident of South Westminster. I am here speaking tonight as a member of UNE, United for a New Economy. We believe in strong communities with social and economic justice for everyone, not just for those of us lucky enough to have a strong safety net. Plans for the Uplands Project would at least provide some three hundred living units affordable to common, average people, but that's not enough. From what I've read of this project, Uplands would provide an ongoing boon to our economy rather than a vacant, fallow field serving no useful purpose. There would be work and job training opportunities for construction workers and later, opportunities for small businesses. For those of you listening who might think, easy for you to say, you don't have to live right across the street from it, I will say this. When it's time for a development project where I live between Seventy-Fourth Avenue and the railroad tracks as part of the Harris Park Vision Plan to be considered, I will be here again saying yes, in my backyard, literally. Of course, I'm dead by then. People don't like change, but unless more of us start dying younger and people decide to stop having babies, we're gonna have to plan for more adequate places for people to live instead of dealing with the aftermath of evictions like UNE staff encounters on a near weekly basis these days. Places where people can afford to live without having to work two and three jobs just for their housing costs and then having to run food cantries to eat. Things need to change with our economy. Supporting the Uplands Project would be a good start. Thank you.
My name is Ron Booth and I live on King Street, just a few blocks south of the proposed Uplands Project, which of course, obviously, is what I'm calling about. I would strongly encourage the council to vote no on this project for many of the same reasons noted by my fellow Westminster residents, which I will touch on briefly. First, the proposed project, rather than being a good fit for the area, instead would stand in stark contrast to the one-story ranch-style homes on their seven thousand square foot lots that surround the entire site. Then there's also the fact that there already exists the occasional problem with runoff flowing down from the site towards Shaw Boulevard, which would be considerably exacerbated by virtually covering the entire site with homes and streets for access to those homes, preventing any rainfall, virtually any rainfall, from being absorbed by that land, causing a river to be flowing down Shaw Boulevard. Already, the minimal growth in the area is worse than traffic congestion and the addition of over twenty-three hundred units and over seven thousand people will make that situation far worse. Finally, and perhaps of greatest concern, is the additional demand on our water resources is considerable given the droughts we've experienced over recent years with no certain end in sight, in addition to the shortened snow seasons and snow packs that we've seen in mountains, which continues to be an issue of concern. And even if this entire planet, we were somehow able to miraculously turn off greenhouse gases tomorrow, all the science indicates that it would take several decades before the impacts we're seeing today of this climate crisis would stabilize and begin to measurably reduce themselves. Therefore, in the interest of plain good common sense, in the interest of putting people before profit, I propose that the council pass a resolution to table any consideration of development of the so-called Uplands Area until such time as the climate crisis has been fully addressed. And in the meantime, consider putting a proposal for the city to buy and preserve this area on the ballot for the voters to consider. You might be surprised to find that there is enough interest that we, the people, would be willing to shoulder the burden of acquiring the property for future generations to enjoy. Perhaps there might be a partnership between city, county, and state that would make such an acquisition more affordable for the residents of Westminster. There should be no rush to develop this property whatsoever. Instead, it should be secured by the city and more carefully considered over time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michelle Trujillo. My address is four three seven one Wagner Drive, Westminster, Colorado, eight zero zero three one, and I want this to be part of the public record. I am against the Uplands Development. This generation is facing a legacy heritage decision, this council right now, tonight, a decision that cannot be reversed and will impact all future generations. I urge you to not have your name amongst those that say, we're just gonna build it all out. There will be no more land, no more open space or remnants of the open plains and the plateaus of Colorado. We are already at max traffic, max water usage in this area. We do not want or need thousands of more people and homes on this land. Make a stand. Have courage to be the voice that all current residents and future generations need, you to be, a voice that stands against one hundred percent build-out in Westminster, Colorado. A voice that says no to high-density housing. Be a voice that speaks for the city's overall quality of life. A voice that protects the beauty of this high land. Take a stand and do not be amongst those who only see dollar signs. Please see me, see my family, see my kids, see our school, Crown Point Academy, see the future generations calling out for open space, view plains, less traffic, cleaner air, cleaner water. We're calling out for peace amongst the craziness of the city. Please leave a legacy that stands out from the rest of the municipalities in this area. Everywhere along the Front Range is big box building and cookie cutter building right now. This special area deserves better and it deserves much more than just another development. It's a crown jewel and should be treated as such, not spoiled with cookie cutter, high-density housing. Please vote no to Uplands and their development plan. And listen to those you represent. I appreciate you listening to this message. I trust that you will hear the citizens and what we are trying to convey tonight. Take a stand. Thank you.
So this is Michael Reed. I live along Lowell, near the perspective of development. I'm against this development. Our open space is priceless. We appreciate this area. We love the area. Not against development, just against this development. It's going to put way too much pressure, traffic, water, other issues on our area. And me, like most of the other residents of the area, are against this development. Thank you.
My name is Charles Martin. I live on Bradburn and I do not want you to approve the Uplands. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kyle Vu. I'm the president of the Hmong American Association of Colorado. We are located off of nine five four six Hellon Drive in North Quinn. I'd like to thank you, city council, for your time to review my message here. We've been talking with the Uplands Project team and there are a few things that I'd like to discuss about. I do believe this is still a great project for our community. We recently spoke about some of the farming that they're gonna be introducing in these areas that where they are gonna be developing. I think this is a great benefit for our community as our community is more geared towards a little bit of that urban farming. So, I mean, if the plan goes through, I think the urban farming areas are gonna be fantastic for the Hmong people in the city of Westminster. Another thing that we previously spoke about with the Uplands Development Team is that since we are, the Hmong people are a major part of the city of Westminster as an ethnical group, as well as the people living in Westminster. We had the student organization come through, or the Hmong Student Organization come through and let me know a little bit about the program and they said that, hey, these houses are gonna be awesome for some of the younger generations. So we don't know for sure if these houses are gonna still be priced competitively for the younger generation once finished and all said and done, but... But, I mean, we'd be willing to work with the Uplands Project to continue and foster these kind of growths so that our future communities in this area are able to afford these houses. Another thing that we do like about this program is that we're, in the past, our organization has had a little bit of financial issues with, you know, retaining a office for our organization. And as a nonprofit, it's fairly difficult to keep a office if there's limited funding supplies or supply streams of funding. So, we've been kinda discussing if there's a possibility of maybe having an office or a community center where nonprofits like mine can be able to rent out in the case of, say, like a meeting. My name is Kyle Vu. I'm the president of the Hmong American Association of Colorado. I was disconnected from the voice messaging system. So I'm just completing my comment real quick. I believe that the Uplands Project is awesome. If they are able to provide the farming community as well as, you know, gear these residential houses for the upcoming generations, as well as making a community center, a cultural center of some sort, this would be an awesome addition to the city of Westminster. So, again, appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Hello, my name is Stephen B. Flint and I would like to say I am totally against the Uplands Development. That is a no. The city council approximately a year, year and a half ago, contributed, I believe, $600,000 for a traffic research going north, not to the south, which the people that lived at Highlands, Uplands, excuse me, would be traveling south towards downtown Denver, towards the Boulder Turnpike. Westminster doesn't need more development as in apartments. We don't need the traffic. We have a lack of water. We will have a lack of water soon. It will overwhelm the sewage system. It just is not necessary for the city. The city of Westminster seems to abandon the southern, the original part of Westminster and they concentrate all their services on the newer development. Is this going to continue? I don't believe that the development of the Uplands falls into the planned unit development plan of the city. We will lose our views. We will lose valuable farmland that absorbs water, carbon. I believe that's what I need to say at this moment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharon Keel. I live in southwest Westminster. This message is concerning the development called Uplands on Federal between 80th and 88th. The residents don't want that land developed and turned into another ugly housing development, blocking that beautiful view from Federal, just like what the developers did to the Westminster Mall area. It's been years and the new downtown Westminster is still only 25% developed. Why not put Uplands there and put an open space park between 80th and 88th and Federal if it needs to be developed at all? The residents of Westminster don't want 2,300-plus more homes built at that area. It's gonna create more traffic. It's gonna be a drain on our water. And developing every square inch of Westminster is going to put a strain, a big strain on the water and cost the residents more for water and sewer. Stop the developing. The mayor and the council need to listen to the voters because we've had enough. I, for one, am considering selling my house and leaving Westminster as soon as I can if this doesn't stop. I've been here 43 years, almost 44, and the city has always been well-run until the last 10, 15 years, something like that. And I, for one, am tired of it. Our area is just a slum anymore. If people can't afford to live here, the city's going to deteriorate more than it already has. Improve the areas of the city that really need it, like southwest Westminster, instead of developing new areas. Stop all this greed and corruption. And something needs to be done about southwest Westminster. It is becoming a slum. I realize it's close to Denver and you just ignore us because you wanna develop the richer areas. But, that's not fair. We pay taxes too. So, you need to stop this and listen to the voters. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Matthew Duran and I'm the current president of the Westminster Education Foundation, also a current Westminster roadcarian. And I'm calling in favor of the Uplands Project. Just know that, as I stated in the planning commission meeting, that it's not if the land is gonna be sold, it's land. And I think that Upland has proven that they're gonna be a good steward for the city of Westminster as well as the Westminster schools. And so I think that if we look at their record and what they've done in projects around the country, as well as Colorado, they will become good stewards for the city. And I'm in complete favor of you approving the project and so that we can get moving forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amy Bone and I'm a teacher with Westminster Public Schools. I'm just commenting on the Upland development and just voicing my support for the development. We could use more housing in the area. I think boosting our enrollment with more children in the area. Enrollment at Westminster Public Schools would be, that would be a wonderful thing. And, yeah, having a place that teachers, you know, housing that teachers could move into and other public employees, I think would be really, a really wonderful thing. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Leslie Buchanan. I'm a Westminster citizen. I've lived here my entire life and appreciate the quality of life I've had. I want you to know I oppose the Uplands proposal to build five-story apartment complexes and block our views and use up our open space and put us in even more of a water crisis than we are now. It's a horrible idea. Please don't do it. Thanks.
My name is Pat Byrd. I'm calling to give my comments about the Uplands' proposed development. I am certainly against it. And one thing I'd like you to remember is that once the developers and builders have made their money, if you approve this, they will be gone. The city will be left with the problems caused by the development. And for a lack of parks, shame on the city for agreeing to let the developers plan to provide less than the minimum park space that the city requires. The city has a duty to look out for the needs of the residents, not the desires of the developer or builders to make more money. And it seems as though I've read that the city sent out a survey to its residents and the residents stated that they do not want high-density areas. Why send a survey if you're going to ignore the results? Lack of water, oh my gosh. We're in an extreme drought situation and it doesn't look like it's gonna be corrected for a long time. In last Tuesday's Denver Post, Eric Sky, who is a special projects coordinator with the Colorado Water Conservation Board, stated, "By 2050, the statewide municipal and industrial water supply gap is projected to be between 250,000 and 750,000 acre-feet per year." That's not gallons, that's acre-feet. These are, and he even said, "Those are pretty scary numbers." From the calculations I did using the developers' estimates, the residents alone would be using at least 17 million gallons of water per month. Plus, whatever the HOA and the commercial units use would be above that. That's a lot of water in an extreme drought situation. Our aquifers are drying up and it takes a long time to even replenish those. I'd rather water go to the farmers and ranchers, you know? Horrible traffic problems. With at least two workers per unit to be able to afford a unit, that means there's going to be at least 4,700 people and at least 4,700 cars. Some will work from home. A few will ride a bike to work and a few will use light rail. But most will get into their car and drive to their job. Federal and Lowell can't handle that huge increase in traffic. And to add lanes to Federal and Lowell, businesses and homes would have to be purchased. That's a long process. And how safe will the students at the school at 88th and Lowell be with the increase in traffic, plus the traffic from the currently being-built duplexes that are crossing the school? I can't imagine the traffic. It's gonna be horrible. And if this is developed, it's gonna have an effect on our climate problem because it's a huge, would be a huge concrete heated area. And that just adds to the problem we have with climate. So I'm certainly not in favor of that Uplands development. It's a huge mistake if the city approves it. Thank you. Bye. Again, Pat Byrd. Bye-bye.
Hi, this is Mark Kaiser, 7035 Zenobia Street, Westminster, Colorado 80030. I could spend my whole five minutes talking about why this Uplands Farm's development is not good for the community. However, I think there are three very important issues on the table. First would be the slow redevelopment of the Westminster Mall. Yet this new development would add another 88,000 square feet of retail development when the old Westminster Mall, which was supposed to be a destination for the new downtown, cannot attract business. If we cannot fill the Westminster Mall, how can we find tenants for another 88,000 square feet of commercial space? Secondly, is the further division this will further cause between southwest Westminster and northwest Westminster. The residents in the south part already are convinced that they are not even considered in decisions that are made by the city of Westminster or the Adams County Commissioners. In fact, in my humble opinion, the Adco Commissioners don't even recognize southwest Westminster as being part of the Adams County. And third, last but not least, the farm would be an excellent option to honoring Westminster and Adams County history by designating it as open space. Enough said. Thank you.
Maria Dolores Ramirez. Dear City Council members, my name is Dolores Ramirez and I'm calling to express my support for the Uplands Development Project. Access to affordable housing is one of the major issues I care about. Recognizing that housing costs are accelerating at a pace that far exceeds the wages and household income for many families in our community. I support the Uplands Project because of their emphasis on workforce development and job opportunities for local workers. I also appreciate their commitment to increasing access to health, affordable, and culturally appropriate food in the area that is scored as low-income and low-access by the USDA Food Desert Map. And their overall commitment to creating economic opportunity for small businesses and businesses, communities of color. However, I'm also underwhelmed by the amount of affordable housing committed to this project. I believe this is due to a direct lack of a requirement for affordable housing by the city of Westminster. The 300-plus units that will be de-restricted in the Uplands Project is good. However, I ask that City Council take a more active role in creating more affordable housing in our community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Naomi Grusa. My address is 8865 Federal Boulevard, Unit 204, Westminster. I'm calling to urge the City Council to vote no on the Uplands Project. Our water supply is already 10% over-allocated, so we do not have enough water to support this project. Tap fees don't make it rain. Water is a basic necessity for every life form on earth, which is why it's so important that we responsibly manage our use of it. The way the proposed Uplands Plan is written now does not even meet the minimum public land dedication. This opens the door for the developer to just build even more in that space, while the city takes the cash in lieu of land for our community. Southwestminster has been neglected in its complete lack of parks and open space. However, northwestminster, which is the more affluent area of the city, has plenty of parks and open space. The existing neighborhoods surrounding the Westminster Farm are home to many who are people of color, part of the elderly population, and lower-income residents. And I believe that everyone should have access to green spaces, no matter their socioeconomic status. The homes in the proposed Uplands Project are deceptively being called affordable. No half-a-million-dollar homes should not be considered affordable, especially since the potential building project would put all of the homes in a metro tax district, where the developers can charge as high taxes as they please. And keep in mind that the developers' goal is to line their pockets with as much money as possible. My neighbors and myself are fighting for our community, the community that lives here now. City Council, I urge you to vote no on the proposed Uplands Project. Thank you.
Good morning, City Council. This is Parker Brown, 9922 Queeway, Westminster, Colorado. I'm calling in favor of the Uplands Project. I just wanted to let y'all know I appreciate all the hard work you've done to put into this effort. I think the Uplands management has done a great job in being transparent and doing the right thing. They are increasing job growth in the area. They are being sustainable. They are increasing housing opportunity for the affordable and for the seniors. They are investing in infrastructure, investing in the schools, investing in special districts. They have done everything, you know, within the community, following all the processes. They have been working through this process since 2017. And they've done everything the right way. So I urge the City Council to look at this as a positive impact to the community and vote yes on this project. Thank you so much and have a great night.
Yes, this is Dwayne Sensky. I've lived in Westminster for 40 years and I just wanna make my voice heard. The development that's been proposed to the City Council is just wrong. We can't do this. We can't afford, as Westminster residents, to entertain this thought. That field that is open provides a wonderful, perfect panoramic view of the mountains and is so refreshing to see on a daily basis. The stress that this number of people in development would put on our infrastructure is way beyond any tax benefit would happen if we allowed this to happen. That number of people in that small area that is already overdeveloped would create many, many problems. Our water and sewer system, which is, as the City Council previously stated, a problem now, how are we to suffice and make it happen for these people, the additional people living there? We'd have to build a total new system. This is just wrong. It's wrong for Westminster. We can't afford this. The water situation in the state of Colorado is horrible. The Colorado River is running way low. Blue Mesa is- Blue Mesa is way low. All of our reservoirs are way low. We can't afford to put this in. And then what'll happen? We all sharing the problems? We all gonna share to rebuild this infrastructure? No, it should fall on their hands if you end up doing it, but it's wrong. Please accept my viewpoint, uh, take it into consideration, and I, I hope and pray City Council sees through this and says, no, there is no benefit. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Francisco Rodriguez, and I live in eighty-eight oh two Kent Street. Uh, I'm calling regarding this, uh, development they wanna do on, uh, our land. Well, it's not my land, but I'd like to keep the land 'cause the way we have a view, we don't wanna lose our view, our mountain view, you know? And I don't, uh, I don't agree with this development. Again, my name is Francisco Rodriguez, and I live eighty-eight oh two Kent Street. Uh, and, uh, like I said, I disagree with this development here. We like to keep the land. We like to keep this farm here. Thank you very much. Thank you. Bye.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ryan McCoy, and I am a native to the city of Westminster, and I live in the Gregory Hill area just south of the property, uh, that will be developed. The purpose of this voicemail is to signal my support for the, for Oriad, uh, Oriad's Development, the uplands. I understand the concerns of several residents, but I also know all change is met with resistance. Oriad has done their due diligence, and in my opinion, has made a strong effort building relationships and addressing concerns within the city. Not to mention, they have modified their plan countless times and are now even creating more parks and open space for our community. The project not only brings affordable housing to Westminster, the project will also be an economic driver for our city for years to come. Furthermore, after reviewing the details of the project, it is clear the uplands will be a development that connects multiple communities and provides trails connecting us to parks and open space, like what we have seen in the northern part of our city. Thank you again for your time, and again, my name is Ryan McCoy.
Yes, this is Dennis Gallagher, fifty ninety-seven Meade, a resident of North Denver, near Regis, Denver, Colorado, eight oh two two one. Dear Westminster Council members, I'm Dennis Gallagher, a resident of North Denver, near Regis University, and I can see the farm under discussion from my home on Meade Street. I grew up in North Denver and can remember riding my bike up Lowell to the farm. It was a great adventure, like going to the mountains to see this historic site. We enjoyed our mom's sack lunches on our trips up Lowell to its northerly highlands. I was voted, I was honored for twenty-four years to serve in our legislature, House and Senate, and the older amongst you might remember the Gallagher Amendment. I served eight years on Denver City Council and twelve years as Denver City Auditor. When I attended Regis University many years ago, our Jesuit teachers asked us to translate the Athenian oath from ancient Greek. The oath asked Athenians to leave their city more beautiful than we found it. I tried to live up to that excellent sentiment while I was in elective office. Will this boat leave our city better off than we found it? Your vote this evening, if you vote to save the farm, as your constituents have lovingly christened the vote tonight, you will follow in that ancient and honorable tradition. And I am pleased to report that the people of Denver also supported that esteemed tradition by voting recently to preserve Park Hill Golf Course as open space in northeast Denver. Listen to this. The mayor and City Council members and city planners, along with many developers, conjured up a witch's brew which would allow development of the old, uh, Park Hill Golf Course site. So the Park Hill Golf, uh, Park Hill neighbors placed the matter on the ballot. The developer then placed a competing, confusing measure on the same ballot which promised to only develop sixty percent of the old golf open space. Three oh one on the Denver ballot passed in most parts of the city, keeping the sites open space, and the people voted against the developer even developing sixty percent of the site. So the people of Denver spoke, and we hope the old site will be able to be preserved as open space. So tonight, dear Westminster City Council members, as you vote in your good judgment about the future of the Westminster Farm, your constituents will hold your names in reverence in the future for having the courage, foresight, and tenacity to vote to save the farm. And if any of you would like a copy of the ancient Athenian oath in the original Greek with English translation, of course, email me at DGALLAG954@AOL, and I will send you a copy. Thanks for letting someone from Denver, especially North Denver, with insight of the historic farm, chime in on this important issue. Again, Dennis Gallagher, Denver.
Hello, my name is Andrew Ramsburg. I live in the area of Ninety-Second Street in Osceola, and I love the view from the castle area. I volunteer at, unfortunately, a food bank that is closing next week. Have a heart foundation, which I always enjoy driving in in the mornings, seeing the sunrise by the castle and the fields, and it would be a real shame to see that cluttered with more high-density apartment complexes, which I've already seen come up in the area on Sheridan where there used to be horse pastures, now it's again, you know, high-density condos, apartments, I don't know what you call them, but, uh, once it's done, it's done, let's, enough has been done, let's slow it down. So again, my name is Andrew Ramsburg, and I disapprove of any more development in this area. Thank you, and please vote with your conscience and preserve the land.
Yes, my name is Larry Cassetta. I live in South Westminster, and I do not believe in this thing that they're having up there for the farms. I mean, Lowell Boulevard, Federal Boulevard, neither one of them are big enough now to handle all of the traffic, and you wanna put more, you know, low-income housing that, you know, in Su-, in South Westminster, which isn't right. All of us property owners down here, our, our property's gonna go down because of all of this crap that you people wanna keep putting in up there. So I'm not for it, and, you know, I feel nobody in South Westminster should be for it, traffic-wise or property-value-wise. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Pacey. I own the Chris Pacey Agency in Westminster, Colorado. Uh, my address is one one eight six seven Bradburn Boulevard, Westminster, eight zero zero three one. And I'm calling in support of the uplands project. I have, uh, ten employees here, and they all talk about the struggle to find affordable homes, affordable housing near the office, and if I'm to attract new employees and grow as we are, it's really important that we have good affordable housing within a close proximity of our office to get the best people and grow our business to even greater heights. Thank you very much.
Hi, this is Calvin Tran. I am calling in support of the uplands community in Westminster. Our community is in desperate, desperate need of more housing, um, for all of the community members, you know, your frontline workers, um, and also as an up-and-coming, um, homeowner-to-be, you know, I, I would love to get more, uh, a range of housing options that's affordable and payable for, um, my first home purchase, which might be possible here. Um, they're making, you know, huge, huge investments into the city infrastructure that would bring a lot more development into the community, you know, a lot more money in, a lot more support for other businesses and other communities as well. So I am in support. Thank you. Bye-bye.
My name is Julie Spear. I am calling to strongly oppose the uplands development that is, uh, being discussed. It's only a couple of blocks over from my house. I am strongly opposed to this. That is a beautiful parcel of land that could really be used to become a, uh, park. We have no great big parks nearby, uh, the, there is very little open space, uh, and, uh, the, there has been very little consideration taken into account in the number, uh, increased number of traffic that's gonna be happening. Is should all of those thousands of, uh, new homes and new people be added to the traffic that's around us already? We already have huge backups, uh, going on Lowell, and there's gonna be even less streets available as you cut off the, uh, across the street of Shaw that's supposed to be, uh, zoned out, and, uh, city residents are already being asked to remove their lawns, reduce their water usage, and we're only getting hotter and drier here, and thousands more people are going to be brought in to, uh, take over this land and have houses built. I think it's incredibly unsustainable. When I asked at one of the meetings if there was gonna be any sort of green building done to, uh, reduce the water usage, I was told that just it's gonna be LEED certified appliances, but, uh, there was not gonna be any reusage of gray water, there was not gonna be any reduction in water usage that I could hear, and I just think it's ridiculous that all of the local and current residents are being asked to reduce their water usage, to be charged more, being asked to remove their lawns, and here you're gonna be putting in a ton more housing and, uh, not taking into, into account that impact. I know that this has already been built into the plan as far as what you think the water usage is gonna be able to, um, be allowable for the water that's already set aside, uh, for the city, but as we get hotter and drier, we need that water for our current residents. And I just think this is very short-sighted, and I think this is a really great opportunity for the city to, the City Council, to actually use the funds that are set aside for open space and acquire some of this land and actually set it aside for the residents to enjoy. That's some fantastic views. There's an opportunity to have, I mean, it's a working farm, if there was a way to have some sort of a reduced, um, a smaller farm there that could be, the community could learn some and maybe some gardens there, that'd be wonderful. It'd be great to have some community gardens there, but it's just, I think it's a real wasted opportunity for that to get turned into high-density housing, use so many more resources, we lose our view, we increase our traffic, and, uh, I just think it's gonna be a really huge negative impact for the area, and it's very short-sighted of the city to allow that to happen. So I strongly oppose the uplands development. Please listen to the local residents who have made their voices heard. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Michael Lazar. I am an attorney in Denver, Colorado. I currently live at eleven fifteen Oakhurst Drive in Brewfield. Um, I've lived in the Westminster-Brewfield area since two thousand eight, and for most of that time I, I lived in Westminster before moving to Brewfield in two thousand seventeen. Um, and even since moving to Brewfield, I've continued to remain engaged in the Westminster community, and my activities include participating in the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, um, representing as a lawyer multiple Westminster businesses and residents, and also continuing to maintain my own rental property in the city of Westminster. And so with all of that in mind, I'm calling to urge the Westminster City Council to approve the uplands project. In doing so, I'd like the council to consider the following. What is the council's fundamental purpose? The main purpose of any city government, any government really, is to protect the individual natural rights of the citizens and the stakeholders, uh, that it oversees. And so the fundamental function of City Council is to protect the natural rights of the citizens of Westminster, and these natural rights include property rights. And what we have in this upland situation is a scenario in which the current owners of the subject land for development want to sell and the uplands developers want to buy empty land so that it can be developed, and, so that it can be developed in an area that is underdeveloped and is often overlooked by the rest of the city. Fundamentally speaking, this is a win for everybody. It is an opportunity for, um, the city government to, uh, enhance, you know, property values and, you know, the lives of many of the residents in the area. It is an opportunity to, um, improve the, uh, availability of housing, including affordable housing for the, for the residents of Westminster. And, you know, all the city government has to do here, the only thing City Council has to do is to let private individuals go to work. You know, it's a very small ask. And, and the one thing that I'd stress, uh, for the, for the council to consider would be that the uplands developers have really gone out of their way during this whole process for a number of years to work with the City Council, to work with individual residents, to work with other stakeholders, including community organizations such as the Westminster Chamber, to hear out the concerns of all of these interested parties, to, um, you know, really come up with a solution that, uh, fits as many different agenda as possible, that, you know, truly promotes and enhances the living experience for the city of, of Westminster. And, and this is the type of transaction that good government should facilitate. I mean, there, there really isn't a good, uh, reason to interfere with this particular transaction. This is land that has been slated for development for a number of years. Water interests, water rights have been allocated to this development for a number of years. Um, if it's not going to be the uplands developers developing this land, then who should it be? If it's not gonna be this particular development, what should the development be? What we have is a tremendous opportunity to build up this particular segment of Westminster in a way that is sustainable, in a way that promotes affordable housing, and in a way that will, um, truly serve Westminster and then surrounding areas for years to come. And for that reason, I call upon the City Council to approve the uplands project. Thank you.
Brenda Baca, to the City Council, please, we, the majority of people of Westminster, don't want and need this development, and we're not going to benefit from this project, especially Section Eight I have been hearing about. And water, traffic, pollution, high death rate, violence, our house taxes go up, but my house value goes down. Please, no thank you, we don't need this.
Hey, how you guys doing? My name is Logan Clark. Um, I live here in the eight zero two three seven area code in Denver, Colorado. I'm the owner and coach of Rand Fitness Training Systems, which is a statewide athletic coaching and training organization. Um, I'm calling because I received some news about how uplands might possibly be, uh, creating a housing community in Westminster, and I just wanna tell you why that would be beneficial to me. Um, as someone whose home church is in Arvada, Colorado, and I'm currently in Bible College and my future seminary will be Denver Seminary, uh, Westminster provides a location that would only be about five minutes from my home church, if that, and only twenty minutes from my future seminary. Uh, currently, my commute in the eight zero two three seven area code to Denver Seminary would be about thirty to forty minutes, and my commute up to my home church is about thirty-five minutes. Now, reason being why I live down here is that Westminster didn't have affordable housing for me, instead I moved down to the Denver area codes. Um, as a result, I've had to live around people who have had, uh, mental illness, um, who have been a part of gangs, people who have had, uh, domestic violence situations, and I've had to have way more run-ins to law enforcement amongst my housing communities than I would've liked to. Uh, I think the uplands projects could have massive upside potential, especially for young working professionals like me and people who wanna be an asset to their community. I feel like if this project went through, it would attract many people who are like me, young working professionals who wanna be beneficial to their community. I genuinely hope that you guys think about this and you accept it, and so you can get someone like me and other people into Westminster. Uh, I hope you guys have a great day, and I hope you take this voicemail into consideration. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hi, uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Lance Nading, N-A-D-I-N-G. I attended Random High School, I graduated nineteen seventy-nine, and I grew up in Westminster. My mom, uh, grew up in Westminster, um, and, uh, she graduated- My mom, uh, grew up in Westminster, um, and, uh, she graduated from Westminster High School in nineteen fifty-nine. So we are very tied to the Westminster community and, um, are very proud of the Westminster community. Um, uh, we don't currently live there, however, it's still very near and dear. My mom's involved with the arts, the arts district and the arts folks down off of Lowell and, uh, that area. And, um, it's very important to us. She's not doing well. She's sick, so I'm speaking on behalf of, of both of us, but we're very, uh, big, um, supporters of the uplands project and what it does to bring opportunity and economic growth to the community that's long, long overdue. I commend you and the leaders of Westminster thus far that have, uh, provided the pathway and the opportunity for uplands to continue, um, with what they're, um, trying to achieve with, um, the amenities, the housing, and the, uh, renewal and repurposing of, uh, several of the areas in and around Westminster for the benefit of the occupants and the residents of Westminster. Um, I continue to support the cause, and I will be available at any point in time throughout the process to give more depth and detail as to why I support, um, the continued, uh, progress of uplands and the developments that they're pursuing for the benefit of the community. I can be reached at three zero three, three five nine, eight three three seven, at any point in time in the future, and I wish the, the project success, and I continue to wish the city of Westminster and its growth and its potential to offer its citizens the best of what is available in our great state of Colorado over the next many, many years. Thank you for your time and your effort, and, uh, I will, uh, continue to hope that this continues to go the direction it needs to. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gwen Wise. I live in Westminster, and I'm speaking tonight to ask Westminster City Council to say no to the uplands development and to pause the development of the farmland. Uplands has not proven to be compatible with the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. Historic agricultural land should be more creatively developed than a carbon copy multi-use urban community can provide. To remove historic land, open spaces, and irreplaceable views of the Rocky Mountains and replace them with high-density housing units is a mistake Westminster cannot reverse once it is done. Even worse, once uplands has approval, they intend to reserve the right to give cash in lieu of some of the publicly dedicated land required of them. The leaders of our city should look at this open space as an amenity for current residents and their future children and grandchildren. Planning for future smart development of some of the land should include looking at more creative ways to use and preserve agricultural land, especially when that land can be used to divide the borders of parts of South Westminster, to define the borders of parts of South Westminster, and make the city a truly special destination, instead of a city that crams as many high-density units as possible in claiming the need for more affordable housing. Speaking of affordable housing, on a national scale, it has become apparent that these urbanized developments don't actually lower the housing costs. In fact, they contribute to higher costs because they follow with using Metro taxing authority as the developers plan to do in this case. Expansive open spaces that you truly preserve the character of the land are necessary for every community. If you look at the Westminster neighborhood na- map, it is apparent that the south part of Westminster has far fewer parks, trails, and open space than any other area of the city. Westminster has built more apartments than almost any other Colorado city in the last few years, and it has not made Westminster more affordable or sustainable. When a push is made to urbanize areas outside the urban center, more towns and cities should be expected to spread the developments around. There are plenty of communities that can take more of the burden of so-called affordable housing developments in Boulder, Adams, and Jefferson counties. Please consider these points, and, um, please put the Westminster, put the uplands development on pause. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ruth Gaetan, and I am all for saving the farm. Thank you so much. Bye.